So those are the three options, or do nothing and wait for the pickleball committee and the park renovation to take place.
I have a question.
Okay.
Are we ever going to do an actual scientific study about the noise level? That something that could be, that could hold up in court if we ever had to deal with that issue? That would be a really serious question to ask because I haven't seen any statistics that prove, number one, that the noise is to the level that it's being alleged to be at. And I do hesitate to move forward at this point, as Mr. Hughes mentioned earlier on in the meeting. I think that this could be part of the pickleball committee's goal, to determine what should be done. I don't disagree that I personally think that at some point we're probably going to have to buy the acoustical fencing, but I'm questioning whether we should be moving forward on any of this right now, since that really should be one of the tasks of the committee when they're appointed.
Mm-hmm.
So I hate to do a knee-jerk decision right now.
Jaha?
One thing, I think we can't fail to understand our primary role regarding citizens is protecting health, safety, and welfare, and that's followed by the protection of property rights. I mean, for this very same reason is why this is not at Isles Yacht Club is because of the fact that the effect it would have. For this to actually work, and this is according to them, it would have to be 10-foot fencing around all sides, which means that not only would it block the view of the homeowners, it would also block the view of the regular park residents, as well as those who are playing pickleball. Otherwise, it's just a waste of money. But then at that point, we're creating this opaque barrier, which now we're going to deal with, it's not going to be just $64,000. It's going to be, we're going to probably need to cover the cost of the significantly lowered property values. I mean, probably for the next meeting, probably have documentation from realtors about how much people, like I know of one person now, he's had to drop his house by $1 million because of the presence of this. This is, this is real. And I think that we need to take this seriously. I also do think that, very directly related, is Pickleplex. I'd say that we are, we're lagging in the sense that we are not with our colleagues in the rest of the state who understand that you place very popular, very community-oriented, very healthy sports in sports parks. The sense of community, that all the good things people said about pickleball, they do those in Naples and Inglewood at their sports parks. I feel that we're remiss in our actual role, which is safety, health, and welfare, in terms of property rights, if we don't understand the gravity of this. And I do think if we were to move forward on noise abatement, it would have to be that 10-foot wall around, which would mean we didn't have to be liable for the cost of the, for the, one, to the city, because we're going to lose a beautiful park, and two, to the residents, who's going to lose their property values, who have already lost property values.
Nancy.
Debbie.
I would just like to say that I went on a field trip over the weekend to a park that has just two walls sealed off with the acoustic fencing. And if you stood behind where the fencing is, you could occasionally hear when a paddle hit a ball, but you never heard the ball hitting the court. When they opened the door to come out, it was like you were in the middle of the court again. So it's the same sort of thing with the gymnasium. When you open the doors of the gymnasium, you hear the noise, you shut it, and it's muffled. That's only on two sides of the court. And the homeowners who live across from this area were perfectly satisfied with the sound abatement from that specific, you know, arrangement. I have not heard anybody, except what you just said now, that says we have to do the whole court. I don't think anybody's asking for that. And I also stood in front of the homeowner's home and sort of imagined where the fencing would go, based on what we're proposing. And they lose, from, you know, your perspective across the harbor, they lose about this much of the view if that fence is there, because it's at an angle. It sort of disappears. And now, my other thing is, I'm not sure if we have to take this out to bids, is it going to do us any good before we have to close the parks for reconstruction?
That's a question for Howard.
Well, yeah, that's a ways from now. Closing that area is a ways from now, because the first phase of the new Phase II project is the Harbor Walk.
Oh, okay, so the courts aren't included in that part? Okay.
It probably will be next year.
Oh, it's a while.
Okay, so that we would get a chance to use this, then, even if we push the purchasing out away?
To be certain.
Mm-hmm, okay. Gary?
Okay. I've been one of the proponents to have the committee, and I think we've got, the way we just structured the form of the committee, it was going to have a finite end. In other words, it was supposed to do its job and do it within a finite period of time. It seems to me, and I have to, a couple, we heard a couple of other people address this issue, is we're in the process of forming that committee, electing people to that committee. I think we should give them a opportunity to do their job. It may come out that it's not going to be in Gilcrest. It may, there may be other locations in the city, there may not. I don't know. But we're in the process of putting together a master plan if we're going to do this kind of thing, so that we can do a good, permanent, proper solution. We're asking good citizens of this city to step forward. They are stepping forward. Let's let them do the job. Let's see what they have to say, and then make a decision. So I think probably at this point in time, we may want to procrastinate on actually making this decision. If we do make one, I will refer to something that Lynn had said in one of our previous discussions, is that if we do buy the fabric, it is movable. So if we move the courts to another location at a future time, then we're not out all of the $12,000, because the fabric would be moved, but we would be whatever the amounting of that fabric would be. So that might be something that we do seriously want to consider as an interim, a Band-Aid, nothing more, until we know what we really want to do personally. I just want to emphasize a couple of points that I heard in our very short discussions from the citizens that we heard. It's a lot of fun. We want people to have fun in this community. It is healthy, but we do want to do the right thing. We shouldn't do the right thing by shooting from the hip. We want to have many activities. I believe that we want to, if possible, in any way to maintain pickleball within the city limits of Punta Gorda, because even though we are certainly as a body firmly behind Pickleplex, we want people to be able to bike to all these fun activities we have. So if there is a place, and if it's Gilcrest, or if it's somewhere else, this is what we want the committee to do, we should ask, we're asking them to do that job so that we can entertain possible solutions, so that our people, and this all comes in with the transportation issue we just discussed, there's, it's not about cars. It's about cars, it's about bicycles, it's about walking, it's about nickel ride, it's about, you know, people that maybe want to start motorizing their golf carts for the street in the future, that type of thing. So we need to be able to take that in holistically, and we just need to be that content. So I'm not opposed to putting sound abatement up right now, as long as it doesn't interfere with the idea of looking for a true permanent solution and asking the committee to do the work. But if we do do that, it has to be in a way, as Lynn pointed out, that at least we can recover a significant portion of those costs that we're putting forward for that.
Can we put it out for bid now? And the committee?
No. No. You have to approve going out to bid first, and then we would, yes, put it out immediately.
Well, my question was, if you, if we approve the sound barrier going out for bid, then we have to, as soon as the bids come in, then we have to make a decision. So it's not like we could time our bidding process with when the committee comes back to us, so that we can act instantly.
We could time it.
We could time it.
Yeah.
We could time it.
I think that would be a win-win if we had it ready to go, if the committee says that's what we need to do. At least then we don't have to wait the time that it takes for the bidding and the...
No, we can time it. That's your call.
Yeah, I would agree with Gary and with Lynn in that we have a committee that we're going to form, and I'd like to hear what this committee solution is. And I think that that's important, but I also appreciate the testimony that the residents have given today, and that we're perhaps staging more on the harbor side, as opposed to the Red Esplanade side, or, you know, those kind of things, that we have a V shape. Perhaps we have to have a V shape. I don't know what that would be. But, you know, so it's totally blocked from Reda. Maybe it has to be landscape. Those are all considerations that I think should come out. But it may, and like you said, Gary, we don't know where. So I would like to see what the residents have to say. But if we do go to, out to bid, we will have those numbers, so that if we're, whatever their recommendation might be, that we will be able to act on something more quickly.
Yeah, I mean, it's just a matter of timing. I mean, when the committee starts meeting, we will time our bid process accordingly, if that's what you want us to do.
Oh, no, Lynn's got to come in.
If we're going out to bid, we have to kind of know what we want them to bid on. So, I mean...
Yes.
You know, we're not talking about fencing the entire section in on all four walls, I don't think. Correct me if I'm wrong, I don't think, most of us don't want that. So, you know, I'm thinking at the very most, it would probably be, like you just said, a V shape, maybe two walls being covered with the wall, so that it protects it from the street side. And honestly, you know, I met with a group from the pickleball community the other day, and they're very, very willing to cooperate in any way that they can, to work with the community, to be good Samaritans and good citizens, and so, you know, they're willing to do a lot of things to help with their own side of it, as far as the noise abatement goes. And I'm inclined to say, let's give this to the pickleball committee, let them work on it, if they, and let this be one of the first things they discuss. And if they come forward with some information that we should then go out for bid, let's know what we're going out for bid for. I mean, because if we're only, if we're bidding on one wall, it's going to be one set of prices. If we're bidding on two walls, it's going to be a completely different set of prices. The more, you know, the more volume you buy, the different the price. So I think this should be the committee's decision. I just do.
One thing, I don't want to get in the way of anything that could possibly bring relief to the residents, but we have to understand, the only people sacrificing this equation are the residents, because if you do the V, players will still have their view. They will be fine, they can go home. Our residents will continue to have the same density, and they will continue to have the lower property value. So to be honest, we personally cannot view this as any kind of solution. But if we can do something that can ease some of the pain temporarily, until we make a real decision, I won't get in the way of that, but understand that we are not doing anything to help the residents right now.
She didn't hit me, so I should have known better. I'm sorry. Right now, we're on the record that when Pickleplex opens, that we're cutting it back to four courts. We've heard some pleas to not do that. We haven't addressed that issue at this point in time. If we're going to put noise abatement up, then that also opens up the question, do we want to just spend that money for four courts, or do we want to leave eight courts, if we do that? Or we're going to have a committee to do, it's a compromise. We also heard the suggestion that may help about staging on the backside of the pickleball courts. So if we're going to be going to four, we may want to hold that steady until such time that the committee, which is going to have a finite time, it's not going to go on forever, finishes it. So with the idea of progressing towards a true, good, legitimate, permanent solution for the best of all Punta Gorda. So I see that as a possible, I'm just throwing out as a possible interim of going, staying the course with the four courts, and at the same time, charging ourselves to then follow up with noise abatement upon completion of the committee doing their work, depending on what their recommendations are and where those recommendations were, are being. We shouldn't make any conclusions right now, I don't think.
So I'm kind of hearing a mixed discussion here. Are we, do we want to have staff go out to bid on something, or not?
I think it's premature.
Yeah, I think it's premature until the committee's done.
Except that we do have an expert who told us what we need to do. The gentleman who gave us this dollar amount met with some people from pickleball, and he told them how much of the court needs to be covered to maximize the sound. And it's not the whole wall. It's that short part before the gate where people go in, and it's then a half-wall. He said that that would provide adequate coverage. And I don't know, I mean, you've got an expert, who else do you want to come in and tell you about it? A salesman who's going to try to sell you the whole thing?
What's the timing for a bid process?
Something like this could be, well, first of all, no more than 30 days, maybe less. Probably, what, quote getting these bids, a couple weeks?
Mark Garing, Public Works. The way we've structured this is we will be purchasing the fabric directly, and that can be a quote for two weeks or so through procurement. We already have the contractor under contract for the fencing, so it'll come together very quick.
Okay. Can I ask a question? Approximately, what is the amount of the cost of the fabric and then the cost of installation?
Installation of the fabric is almost nothing. It's stainless steel zip ties.
Mm-hmm.
A gentleman on a ladder up there zip-tying it every two feet.
So the point, the point being is, is if we were to put noise abatement in at this point in time, that asset is virtually recoverable if we were to decide to move to a different location?
On the one existing end fence only.
Okay.
The side, facing toward the south, toward Fisherman's Village, that side, the fence is adequate with a couple of diagonal braces.
Sure.
On the side facing toward the north, along Reda there, will require that we install a new fence. The fence that's there is only four feet high, and that won't provide any sound abatement.
So what would be the cost of that fence versus the cost of the fabric, approximately?
Would we say it's 12 versus 20?
Yeah, 20.
So $8,000, roughly $8,000 is the cost of the fence.
For the fence?
Yes.
So if we were to do the $20,000 option, then...
No, there's no $20,000 option.
No.
It's either 12 or 32.
Okay, 32.
32, because you have to install the fence.
Okay, so, but, okay, so if we do the 32, it's, the material is recoverable with the exception of the cost of the fence itself?
Yes, basically.
Okay, I just, I just want to, if the park is closed for renovation, these courts are closed for, about what time would that be?
We don't know.
Three months? Are we looking at 12 months?
No, 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 longer than three months, way longer.
I'm just throwing out a number. So it is longer than three months.
To close the park?
Yeah. Where the courts themselves would be closed.
Probably, yes.
About three months.
We can't guarantee anything till we get the bids back from the contractor, so that we can have more finite timelines. I get, you know, I get nervous when we throw out some of these numbers right off the bat when we don't have some bids.
I understand.
But it will be closed for a specified amount of time.
Mm-hmm.
We'll try and limit it as much as we can.
And so my next, my next question would be is, even if the committee comes back to us, we don't know what that's going to be, and it might be a long-term solution, not a short-term solution. Whatever its recommendation is, if it's going to talk about moving courts, it's going to another location, that's going to require issues of funding, ground, et cetera, that's going to have a time, too. So I just turn in myself, in terms of doing a noise abatement, even if it was temporary at Gilcrest Park, it's going to be for a very significant period of time. It's not going to be for even a period of a year. It's probably going to be for a period of at least a year, or it's going to be permanent, or it's going to be a year plus whatever it takes to implement whatever solution the committee was, and whatever solution we might accept from the committee. Does that make sense? So I think we should probably go through with, at this point, I'm inclined to go through with whatever we did to do some noise abatement on these, on these courts.
Right away?
Until we determine what to do.
You're saying right away? Do the noise abatement right away?
Yeah. I think we need to go to bid sooner rather than later.
I would agree with that.
I'm in support. I just understand that, I was different support, but it need to be at least 32, but understanding that we're also voting for harming property values at the same time. So we do understand that's going to be over our head, that we're going to have to address at some point as well.
So is there a motion for something that you want to do? Or are we going to just sit here and not do anything?
No, I, with a great deal of reluctance, because of the, I don't want to look like we're superseding the committee's decision, but I think the residents, they at least deserve some sound abatement immediately. And maybe then the conversation will change. We don't know. So I'm, I'm in favor, I make a motion that we bid out the minimum amount of fencing it takes to provide what the expert says we need.
So the minimum is the $12,000 option?
That's it.
You don't want the $32,000?
I do not want the 32.
With both sides?
No, I do not.
Well, how high is that going to be at 12, unless it's 10 feet?
12,000 would be only that one 10-foot fence. We would not do the side.
Oh, not, not any part of the side?
No.
I thought that included two pieces.
No.
No, just one end fence for...
Okay, well, didn't the gentleman say that we needed to do at least the first two segments of the fence along the side?
I've never spoken to this gentleman. I don't know who that is. We met a contractor out there for the fencing and told him what we were looking at doing, and that was, I was given direction to look at one side, two sides, three sides, four sides, and that's what we got pricing for. But I don't know of any expert that's given us any direction.
Okay. I may have misunderstood.
It's either $12,000 or $32,000. That's what we're voting on.
32 for two walls.
Yes.
I'm supportive of 32.
Okay.
We have a motion for 12 right now, so we have to, do we have a second?
Excuse me. Lynn, you have a question?
Question, yeah, just for clarification. So you're just saying that we should go out to bid for it and not purchase it?
Well, no, I thought we just decided that we needed, we needed to provide the homeowners with sound abatement. My concern is that I, from when I was looking at the configuration, I'm not sure that just doing the one wall is going to...
It's not going to stop anything.
Is going to stop it.
No, one wall is not going to.
But I don't know that we need all of both walls. That's my concern. Well, especially if we're only down to four courts. You know, why are we fencing in four courts that we're not using?
We also haven't decided which four courts are going to be left if we're taking four out.
Well, for the sound acoustics to work, they need to be the ones closest to the sound acoustics.
So...
I mean, one thing we can consider is, is if we're going to go ahead and do the noise abatement, is leave all eight courts intact.
Oh, you have to open that can of worms, don't you?
I'm just saying. I mean, that is part of the discussion.
That's not reasonable, because you have the density as well. I don't see why we just can't do the 32 and just stay as, stay of the course we are right now.
No, I'm not arguing with you. I'm just throwing that out as if that's part of the discussion. It's obviously not going anywhere.
I would not want to see us just purchase one wall of fencing. I think that's a waste of money.
No, I misunderstood the quote.
So you have to change the motion.
So can I amend my motion?
There wasn't a second, was there?
No, there was not a second. So the motion died for lack of a second.
Go ahead.
So are you going to make another motion?
I'm going to make a motion that we put out to bid to do two walls.
I second it.
So there's been a motion and a second.
And again, are we going to just bid it out and not purchase it, or are we going to go ahead and purchase it when the bids come in?
When the bids come back...
That'll be a whole nother vote.
When the bids come back to you with the exact dollar amount, we will come back to you for approval.
And then we'll vote.
It has to be an approval.
We can't vote on it now.
I understand that part, but...
Well, it's within my purview to sign off on, if it comes in at this price. But do you want me to sign off on, or do you want to come back to you for the final call?
I think if it comes anywhere near that, that price, we should just do it.
Because it's within my purview to sign off on it.
We need to purchase it. I mean, otherwise, we're just playing with the public.
What was your motion to go out to bid?
My motion is...
Are you going to amend your motion? Well, wait.
No, no, I, no, it hasn't been seconded, but...
I second it.
He's seconded it.
Well, the motion, the way I understood it, was basically just to put it out for bid and let's buy it.
The two sides.
Two sides.
Yep.
So we're going to buy them? Or we're just going to do exercise?
Well, it's got to come back to count...
No, it doesn't.
No, it doesn't.
Oh, it doesn't now, because it's within...
If we want Howard...
Aye, aye, aye.
I know. I mean, I'm in agreement with Lynn about, we have a committee that's going to be analyzing this, but since it's temporary and it's something that could be done quickly to help alleviate perhaps some situation, then I would support that, so. So we have a motion and a second? All in favor?
Well, what is it, are we purchasing or only bidding it out?
Purchasing.
Howard has the authority to purchase it.
So that's the bid.
Do you have that as the motion, Karen?
I'm sorry?
Do you have that as the motion?
I have that council member, Carrie, moved to go out for bid, to go out to bid for two, because fence walls.
Okay.
That's the way I wrote it.
So she just said to go out to bid. So bid and purchase if the price comes in close to our anticipated amount.
I second that.
Can I say it that way?
Can you? Okay. So let's call the question. All in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? So motion is approved to put in the sound abatement.
Two sides.
On two sides.
And if the bids come back where it's close to that $32,000 number, I will sign off on it, and we will get it done.
Okay. So let's move on with this, the next item, resolution.
This is a resolution, which I'll read by title only.
Sorry, I'm sorry. Before we move on, I feel like I really need to say something about the pickleball committee. Y'all have been, and members of the audience have been saying, let's wait till the pickleball committee makes their recommendations, makes their recommendations. When we discuss creation of the pickleball committee, the end result was that it would be a fact-finding committee only. They're not making recommendations to you. They are only presenting you with information, some of which it seems like you already have. But I just wanted to be clear that that's all they're doing. They're not going to be coming back and saying, we recommend that the pickleball courts be moved out of Gilchrist Park, that it would not be within their purview. Their, within their purview is to find the facts of...
That's my understanding.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you for the clarification.
Semantics.
Good point. And the reason being is sunshine law implications.
Yes.
Yeah.
Thank you, Karen.
All right. Thanks.
So this is a resolution, which I'll read by title only. A resolution of the City Council of the City of Punta Gorda, Florida, accepting a bill of sale, release of liens, affidavit of no liens, and warranty from D.R. Horton, Inc. for water distribution and wastewater collection facilities located within Waterfurther States' Phase II-B, providing for conflicts and separability and providing effective date.
You have the information. We checked with Waterfurther States. We have accepted already part of their development into our utility system. We need to accept the other part. We can deal with the annexation thereafter, because they have homeowners' associations that we will be contacting to see if we can get it together. But this is a utility acceptance issue, and we've already accepted part of their development. We need to accept the other.
Motion to approve the resolution.
Second.
There's been a motion and a second to approve the resolution. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye. Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Motion carries. Okay.
We have a question from Public Works. What is the issue?
Color. Mark Garing, Public Works, color of this fencing. The manufacturers that we've looked at supplies it in dark gray and green, and they also provide a printed version for additional money that can look like foliage, um, brick, anything like that. Is there a strong opinion on, on that?
Green.
Or we just simply go by price?
Green.
Hot pink.
Green.
Green is fine.
We have enough for green.
Thank you very much.
That's a very important issue in the.
Unless it doesn't, unless it doesn't look good.
Okay.
Unless it's ugly.
Dredging of Ponce Inlet.
Yeah, now this, uh, this is more of an informational piece. It's to keep council members informed. This went in front of the Ponte Gordo Isles Canal Maintenance Committee to move forward with looking at dredging of Ponce Inlet to seven feet. This is a long process. This doesn't happen overnight with the results of the committee.
Yes, this was heard yesterday at the Canal Advisory Committee, and they have a couple of concerns. One is that they're currently out for a consultant to look at all of, um, Ponce Inlet as far as dredging width and, and all of that. Uh, and also, they're concerned that beyond marker one, uh, they quoted the depth as being four point eight. So they didn't understand what we're gonna do with that. Um, and it's a, a major accomplishment to go beyond marker one with any dredging. So they, they're, they're hesitant to, say, to go to seven or eight, uh, up to, up to marker one when you're gonna hit four point eight afterwards.
So there's issues they have to work out.
Yes.
So, um, I'm glad they had a discussion on this yesterday, um, and I'll open this up to, um, council member comments.
I'll, I'll speak on behalf of the Boaters Alliance, because I've been working with them. Um, this happened to be something that came up at the last Boaters Alliance meeting. One of the gentlemen in the organization who has, um, a relatively good extensive knowledge of depth soundings and taking depth soundings, went out and took several hundred depth soundings throughout the entire Ponce Channel, and he found very inconsistent depth readings on all the different areas that he checked. And so he did a whole report, which I believe, I think council already got that report. I think it was forwarded to everybody on council. But, so, knowing that the, the permitting process takes a long time, possibly as long as a couple of years, the Boaters Alliance has made the recommendation that we start the process of looking into whether we can dredge to seven feet. And that's why this is on the agenda as a discussion item. Do we wanna proceed with it? Does anybody think there's any merit to it? That's a very valid point, however. You're absolutely right. When you get out marker one at Ponce, you sometimes have a very dramatic drop off on, on depth. And I've experienced that with my boat. My, my boat drafts four feet, so it's, you know, there are times in low tide when you have that issue. So that could be a problem down the road. But.
My, um, question when we first received this was, why is it being sent to the council when I know, from my experience in Burnstour Isles, we discuss everything, you know, within Burnstour Isles and, and, um, and then we bring it to staff. And if we need something, you know, I guess we would, uh, come to council, but, you know, Howard said, well, this, you know, would come to council for approval. Well, yeah, well, ultimately, you know, it, council proves everything because it's part of the budget process. But I, I would expect, you know, things to be well-vetted within the Ponte Gordo Canal Advisory Committee. And if, if they feel like they need a bathymetric study, uh, and they need to do a, a maintenance dredge, or they need to do whatever they need to do, it's something that, that they have the, the purview to work out and work into their plan and, and, um, I would just surprise that the Boaters Alliance is bringing it to us rather than the, the Ponte Gordo Isles Canal Advisory. So I just think it's, there's, whatever they need to do, it's, they can work through.
So they should just work through the Canal Advisory Committee, is what you're saying?
Well.
Well, they're gonna do that anyways.
I, I just feel like that's the process. You know, that's why we have the Canal Advisory Committee. I know, you know, in Burnstour Isles, we certainly do that and, and have a number of things on the agenda. And, um, and we haven't brought it to council to say, can we or can't we? It's been working through Mark and Kathy Miller and, and the, you know, excellent canal maintenance team. So, um, on whatever it is, and I, you know, uh, whether we need a bathymetric study or whatever we need to do, so. That was just my own thinking, my own reaction.
It's gonna be up to the Ponte Gordo Isles Canal Advisory Committee to how far they wanna move on this. This is on council's agenda for informational purposes, so that you're very well aware of what they're facing. If, if the Canal Maintenance Committee doesn't wanna deal with it, I guess they'll make a recommendation not to deal with it. But if they do, then it'll have to come out within the funds that they have.
Yeah.
Okay. That's fine.
Okay. Okay. So we'll move on then to recommendations from city officers.
We are, uh, ready to schedule, uh, one, maybe two, but definitely one, uh, community conversation for budget input for the next year's budget. Probably late March, sometime in April. The only reason it's on the agenda is, um, typically the last couple of years, staff has been doing them. They're much, they're very informal. Uh, it's not a very formal, uh, meeting. Uh, we get input from folks. We write them down and we bring them to city council as part of the budget process. No decisions are made, just information. Does city council want to, uh, sponsor the meeting and actually run the meeting? Or do you wanna continue to have staff just do it on an informal basis? Schedule it. Obviously, council members attend and listen, just listen. We're, we're willing to do either. Either staff continues, we, we do it continually as staff leadership, or does city council wanna take the leadership as far as getting budget input? Now, if city council takes the leadership role, it's gonna be formal. It will be in here. And, uh, people can then submit and, and come up and provide but, uh, input to the budget. Whereas if staff does it, it'll be a little more informal.
Jaha?
I, I've attended the informal ones. I think that for purposes of getting, I'd say, a more, um, robust community conversation, I think it's just better. I think with it not being so formal, people will speak more freely and share. I think it's better for the process.
I agree.
I agree.
That's exactly what I said to Howard when we had our, our briefing.
Yeah, I agree, and especially, um, it doesn't limit someone to three minutes, or if somebody wants to speak twice and somebody, it just allows for better dialogue. And that's what we want. We have a number of issues that we can certainly submit items to staff to, you know, consider as, uh, to Howard as far as potential items.
When we had the one here last year, and we kinda sat in a big, open circle, it was very, very open communication. People really spoke freely and, and, and there was a lot of really good ideas that were brought out. So I think that's, that's a format we should stick with, because people tend to be more timid in a, in a formal environment like this.
Okay. Did you get what you needed out of that? How soon do you plan on doing this?
Well, we'll schedule it very soon. I mean, we're not, we're talking about the end of March or in April.
Okay.
After the charrettes. We don't wanna get, we don't wanna get in the middle of that.
Okay.
But. The response today is exactly what I heard in the one-on-ones, which I can't tell you.
Okay. So the next item on the agenda, anything else?
No.
Please attorney.
Okay, so, as you know, um, we have received a settlement proposal in the litigation, um, against the city regarding the methodology of assessments for the BSI and PGI Canal Maintenance Assessment Districts. All lawyers are required to, and obligated ethically, to bring their settlement proposals to their clients for, um, consideration and, um, determination as to whether or not the, uh, settlement proposal is appropriate, whether the counterproposal, uh, is appropriate. And, um, and so there's a, a, a need for a, um, um, a confidential discussion with their clients regarding the pros and cons of the litigation and be able to have you intelligently understand, um, how, if, if at all, to settle the case. Uh, obviously, attorneys that are operating under the sunshine law, um, uh, in the absence of an exception from the sunshine law, would have a very difficult time, uh, operating on a level playing field with their, uh, opposition if they had to discuss, um, their strategy, uh, with respect to a case, uh, in the open. And so there's a very express exception under the Florida government and the sunshine law with, with respect to, um, the opportunity of, of the, uh, city attorney to meet with the city council, um, outside of the sunshine law. And, um, and, and there, in the section of the sunshine law that talks about this meeting, and it's, it's known as a shade meeting, because it's not ultimately entirely outside of the sunshine law, because part of the requirement is that there be a, um, a, a court reporter transcribing the meeting, which at the end of the litigation becomes a public record that the public can see how the, how the city council discussed the case. And there's also, um, other specific requirements in order to be able to conduct the meeting, um, consistent with the requirements of the law. But it's very clear that the city attorney has the discretion of requesting this meeting to trigger, to trigger the opportunity to meet with you, um, outside of the public eye. And the subject matter of the meeting shall be confined, I'm reading from the statute now, shall be confined to settlement negotiations or strategy sessions relating to the litigation expenditures. And, and so I am, um, exercising the opportunity I have given to me by the Florida Legislature to request a shade meeting to consider the settlement proposal that was, um, uh, received. We need to identify a specific, uh, day and time, uh, for that meeting. Reasonable notice will need to be, um, um, made public as to, uh, when that's gonna take place and the names of the persons who will be attending the session. Again, because this is a regulated, private meeting, there are a number of hoops that we have to go through in order to have that take place. But the suggestion that this is an illegal meeting just is not accurate under the provisions of the law. So we have received a request. Uh, I'd like to, um, have an opportunity to discuss the, the settlement proposal with you, to discuss case strategy, um, so that you can give me direction with respect to, um, how to proceed upon receipt of the settlement proposal. Ultimately, uh, if there is a, if there is a settlement that's going to be, um, agreed upon between, um, the, the parties, it, that proposed settlement will have to come before you for your vote in a public session. So this shade meeting is simply for you to give me direction as to how to proceed. Most of the litigation that the city is involved in, uh, is represented, is defended by our insurance attorneys. And, uh, and as the city attorney, there's, um, there aren't that many cases that myself and my, my litigators at the office are required to, um, handle on behalf of the city. And so the mere fact that I haven't frequently asked for shade meetings is a function of how often, you know, I'm handling this. But I did, I do recall years ago, uh, in a zoning lawsuit, uh, asking for a shade meeting, that, uh, we were able to consider the settlement proposal and ended up in settling that case. More recently, the Winter Park Dodge case. We received a settlement proposal, brought it before you. But I did not feel that there was an, any need for me to have a shade meeting to get your input, uh, regarding, uh, the response, so I didn't ask for one. In the Fisherman's Village, uh, litigation, we actually didn't receive a settlement proposal. So I would not have been in a position to request a shade meeting at that time. So this is the, this is a, an opportunity, now that we've received a settlement proposal, for me to discuss the case, the, um, the strategy of the case, uh, and seek your advice as to how you want to respond to the settlement proposal. And, um, so, we could do it, um, at the next, after the next city council meeting, or whenever you believe it would, no. Okay, I need a, I need a date and time, um, so that we can then start the ball rolling for having, meeting the, the, the notice requirements that are provided for in the statute.
Is that now?
Um, I would like it now, yes.
Okay.
I'm here on this issue. Is it possible for me to make a comment at this point regarding the timing? The issue you're addressing, as I understand it.
Sir, could you please step to the microphone, so that we get you on the rec, we just wanna get your comments on the record?
Can you hear me?
Yes.
My name is Miroslav Volchko. I'm one of the two plaintiffs in the case and a resident of, uh, Burnstour Isles since two thousand and four. I guess my comments would be appropriate at this time, unless you disagree, only with respect to the issue being considered, which is the timing of a meeting. And I'd like to just address that, and I can address more if permitted. There's a, there is scheduled currently a motion for summary judgment that we have filed in court regarding this issue, because there are no questions. A fact that we see, it's all a question of law. That hearing is scheduled for March eighth. I've been requested by city attorney Levin to adjourn that date. And I indicated that I'm willing to adjourn it if there's an indication from the council today that they will be, they're willing to consider the settlement. If the settlement is rejected out of hand, uh, or a meeting is rejected, however you wanna handle it, uh, that hearing will go forward. So that's March eighth. Now, if you'd like me to also address the issue, I can do that, or I can wait till later. You'd let me know.
So, um, this, as I tried to explain, uh, this is the opportunity for you to grant my request for a meeting at which time you can consider the settlement proposal. You can, and it's certainly your prerogative, because it's merely a request on my part, to deny my request and to totally reject the settlement proposal without hearing from your attorney with respect to the merits thereof. So, I would appreciate, you know, if you would grant me the opportunity to meet with you. I understand, and I think I now recall that, that the March eighth meeting has got a very full agenda. So, I mean, not, uh, the March sixth meeting has a very full agenda. So if you can set a day and time for a hearing as soon as practicable, where I can have you consider the settlement proposal, I hope that that would be satisfactory to opposing counsel.
How much time do you need?
I, I'll probably need no more than, um, forty-five minutes.
Could we do it Thursday or Friday this week?
No.
How, how much time, how much in advance do you need?
Oh, if, if we were to do, and my recommendation is that we do it, um, at the second, um, city council, at the end, following the second city council meeting in March. Hopefully, the agenda won't be too long. We could set it for a specific, a time at one-thirty, and we would meet from one-thirty to, you know, quarter of, uh.
So it would be March twentieth?
March twentieth, yes.
I, that would be fine with me.
That's fine for me.
There, there is, if I can elucidate a little bit, there is another thing the city council can do. In addition to rejecting the settlement, as attorney Levin suggested, the city council also has the right to accept the settlement.
Well, my recommendation to my clients is until they have the opportunity to hear the pros and cons of the litigation, that I would hope that they would give me the opportunity to discuss the case with them.
I'm not arguing, Mr. Levin. I'm just pointing out another option.
Thank you. I, I would like to have the opportunity to hear from our attorney.
Me too.
Yes.
Okay, so I see some consensus there.
What does the March twentieth date do to his?
I'm looking at the calendar. I see, um, a bargaining, collective bargaining shade meeting following the meeting on the twentieth.
On the twentieth? There's nothing on my calendar.
I'm sorry, that's today.
Yeah.
I need to look at March.
On March twentieth.
Yeah.
March.
The only thing I got is I got a credit.
So, March twentieth at one-thirty, did you say?
What, what does that do to his March eighth meeting, though?
And if I understand correctly, once the city council sets the shade meeting for a specific date and time, you will continue the hearing that was set for March eighth.
Okay.
Sort of. Let me, let me explain. We originally had filed the motion, as you know, to be heard on January fourteenth. We've been delayed and stonewalled in this issue for two, three years now. Frankly, I'm involved with the group. I'm being pushed hard by the group to not accept any further delays. However, if the council is willing to consider, which it appears to be, a settlement, is there any reason why you can't have the shade meeting before March twentieth? That's a long time away.
I wouldn't misconstrue our conversation.
I'm sorry?
I would not misconstrue our conversation as any kind of action one way or the other.
No, my question is, right now, I think what I'm hearing is, the earliest you can consider this is March twentieth. Is that a correct statement?
That's what we were discussing.
Okay. Is there a reason why it can't be done sooner? You can't, you have a special meeting? I recall that you had a special meeting in connection with the pickleball issue. We didn't have our attorney at that one, though. Oh, so the attorney says you can't have a special meeting?
No, no, no.
No, no.
No, no. If, if you want to come in at a time, uh, to. It's certainly your prerogative to have a special meeting. I don't, I didn't feel like it was necessary to have a special meeting, since this could be held after a regular scheduled meeting. But certainly, if you want to have it at a different day and time, you have the prerogative to do that. I'm simply asking for, for the meeting. And it needs to be done so that there's, um, an opportunity for reasonable notice to be published before that shade meeting takes place.
What is a reasonable notice?
Two weeks.
We're running into the master plan week. That's gonna be very crazy busy for everybody.
March twentieth works for me.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Works for me too.
That makes the most sense to me.
That makes the most sense to me. Is there a day the week of March the 4th that works? Other than, I, I'm leaving, I have a flight out of here on Wednesday afternoon, and I'll be gone the rest of the week. So, on March the 6th. So if I was to meet, it would have to be, and we have agenda meetings on the 4th and the 5th.
I cannot, I would not recommend the March 4th week. I'm not, I don't think that's appropriate.
Okay.
I couldn't do it on the 4th anyway.
And next week is?
I can't do it on the 4th.
And next week is too early.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Is what you're saying.
So if you, if you have an opening on the week of the 11th, that would, that would...
Well, that's the charette week.
Plus, that's after the hearing date. I'm trying to get an answer before the hearing date.
Well...
If that's impossible, let me know.
I explained to you that based on the scheduling, when we first started talking about this, that the likelihood of us being able to arrange for a shade meeting, because I have to ask for that shade meeting at a city council meeting, and then having the shade meeting scheduled following that with appropriate notice, that the March 6th hearing date, March 8th hearing date, excuse me, was not practical. You chose to set that date anyway.
Yes.
So now you're seeing the practicalities that I was trying to explain to you, without trying to delay. And you say that you've been on hold for two years. You didn't file this case two years ago.
Exactly. We filed it because we got no satisfaction and, or reasonable treatment. We were forced into that, but yes, that's correct. We recently filed this case last October, actually. And there was a hearing scheduled already for January 14th, which we've postponed at your request.
Because you took us up on the offer, the opportunity to submit a settlement proposal. You chose not to do that, then we might be on a different schedule.
So the earliest, you're, just so I understand and it's clear, you're proposing the earliest possible date of March 11th or something, 10th, 11th? What's the earliest date you can meet?
No, March 20th.
That's the week of the citizens' master plan.
Okay.
There's no way.
What date we looking at?
The 20th.
March 20th.
Okay.
For our shade meeting.
At this point, I'm not willing to adjourn the March 8th hearing, which means that the, you don't even have to consider the settlement at this point. I'll contact Mr. Levin if that changes. I'd like an opportunity to address the issue itself, since it's on the agenda.
It's not on the agenda for discussion.
I'm not asking for discussion, I'm going to make a comment, a citizen's comment. Yeah. This is just under citizens' comments.
You have the right to do that, sir.
Under citizens.
And is it appropriate, we've got five or six people in support of this here, they each have a right to speak for three minutes, as I understand it, and I assume it's appropriate if they yield their time to me.
That's not appropriate, but they do have the right to speak for three minutes.
So if they stand up here, I can do the talking, I assume?
No, that's not what I said.
Okay. You know what? I'm not going to say anything. Would you see you in court on March 8th?
Yes, sir.
Actually, I would like to say.
It's, yeah, under citizens' comments.
And we're not there yet, is that correct?
No, we're not there yet. Thank you. So we're going to be scheduling a meeting after?
No, he's, he's withdrawing his settlement proposal.
So we have no meeting?
So there's no meeting.
It's just going to go to court.
So we're not going to have the meeting?
Correct.
Okay. Okay.
That's all I have. Thank you.
Okay. City clerk?
Yes, just very quickly, under boards and committees, vacancies, we have a three-year term for an alternate on the Board of Designing Appeals, an unexpired term for an alternate on the Building Board, and an unexpired term for an alternate on the Code Enforcement Board. We have no nominations today under appointments.
Thank you.
This is for an unexpired term on the Code Enforcement Board, this will be a regular seat. We have four eligible applicants. You're voting for one, please?
And the appointee is Ms. Giadina.
Thank you, that's all I have.
Okay. Policy and legislation. Next week, Lynn and Debbie and I are going to be attending Senator Elizabeth Benquistow's pre-legislative luncheon. State Senator Bill Galvano, who's the Senate President, is going to be speaking at that. I understand there will be numerous legislators there at that luncheon as well. So this is an opportunity for us to really thank them for their support and, and so... And then in the afternoon after that, Ben Nelson is going to meet with us separately, which is good. Not Ben Nelson, why am I saying that?
Albritton.
Ben Albritton, sorry, Senator Albritton. And Senator Albritton is going to be meeting with us, and so that's very positive as well. So that's, I think, all I have, trying to think of other things that are coming up. But, you know, I will defer to council member comments. Jahah?
Yeah, I'm going to be in Tallahassee that day. But I want to let everybody know, March 5th at Leroy's, the Blunt House Museum is having a taste of Africa Leroy's style, so it's going to be, it's going to promote the museum, and it's, as part of it's called the March on Museums. So all throughout the state, there are things, museums doing all over the state, and so it's, it's going to have three different types of food, food from the Gullah part of Low Country, Creole food, and Southern soul food, and so it's going to be a good event.
Great.
Thanks to everyone on council for going to the Military Heritage Museum for the VIP tours. I hope you were impressed with what you saw, and we're looking forward to a lot of great things over there. The next major event they're going to be holding is going to be on March 29th, which will be Welcome Home Vietnam Veterans. And the details are still being worked out on all of it, but, and they're still working on taking possession of the building. They're still, they're still doing some painting and touching up and doing some minor things that have to be fixed, but we're hoping to have that event at the new museum. So stay tuned for good things. Thank you.
Excellent, excellent, thank you. That was a great tour.
Yeah, but you got to do the flight simulator.
I did.
Yeah.
I learned that, why I'm not a pilot.
I could not get my husband to sit there and do that.
Yeah.
He would not do it, he was very intimidated. The pilot.
Gary?
I'm hungry.
Me too.
Here we go. Debbie?
I have nothing.
Nothing? Okay. Citizens' comments, you have three minutes, please come to the podium and on any topic.
Hi, I'm Sheila Yeager again, I live on Reta, and I'm sorry you're hungry, and I'm sorry to come back up here again, but there are some things I really wanted to put before you. First of all, thank you very much for the noise abatement. As I said, this is going to help me as a homeowner a great deal. But I did want to point out, this was a very organized group today, obviously a lively, dedicated, passionate group, and one of the things that was passionate about them is that they love Gilchrist Park. And I wanted to point out that, that they're not the only ones that love Gilchrist Park. There are other park users that aren't organized, that may be passionate about the park, but because they aren't organized, their voice isn't, isn't being heard the way you saw today. Okay? And the other thing I wanted to point out about that particular general overall impression is they love Gilchrist Park so much that it is, it appears that it's going to be the chosen venue for pickleball above Pickleplex. So overflow may go to Pickleplex, but Gilchrist Park appears to be the favored place to play, which is great for them, but not great for us as a neighborhood. I also wanted to point out that somebody said that, nobody ever said all four sides of abatement would be needed, and I know that in, every time I have mentioned noise abatement, I have said that we would need all four sides, and that's because other park users are going to be affected by that cone that will help the, the neighborhood, but not help the other park users when they are getting that radiating noise. And the noise. The fact is, if the pickleball committee comes back and says that they did decibel studies, and the decibel studies showed this, I wanted to make sure you understood again that we're talking about something, and I think the, it's a small world, it's a, is something that I brought up. You also could imagine somebody playing ping pong in one room of your house, and, you know, your house having acoustics such that you could hear it in every room. The decibels may not bear out that this is a noise, noise problem in terms of intensity, but that doesn't mean it's not a big problem for those of us that have lived with it. And about the pickleball committee that is being formed, it's going to be very heavily, obviously, from what you've seen today, and from the fact that it's going to be composed of one person from every district and two players, I believe, I think you're going to find that the players are going to dominate that committee. And one of the players that came up and requested to be on the committee today representing a district, said that she was hoping to serve her fellow pickleball, pickleball players. I would like to see them serving the whole community.
Thank you.
Karen Turnbull, Punta Gorda. Just having sat through the, the whole pickleball discussion today, I'm also a resident of Punta Gorda and a taxpayer. I enjoy the serenity of Gilchrist Park, and I agree with this person who just spoke. I would not want to live across from continuous noise, even if the, the intensity wasn't that much. The fact that it's continuous would grate, would be grating. And I do find that that would, that changes the atmosphere of the park for people that, that appreciate the serenity of the place. The second thing, in terms of the lawsuit, we, we need an endpoint. And so I'm going to ask the attorney, can you give us a date when you would be ready for a hearing? I mean, if you're going to say, well, we need shade meetings, and another one, and another one, and another one, we definitely need to go with March 8th. If you say, say, April 3rd would give you enough time?